Hi, this is the regular monthly meeting of the Dayton Development and Industrial Commission. This meeting is being recorded for replay on Dayton Channel nine and on Dayton's YouTube channel. If everyone can join me for the pledge of allegiance.
By the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God.
So I don't know if anybody needs a copy of the agenda. So the first thing was just to review the firecracker festival, so. We didn't get a lot of traction. It said we were going to make it available for people to just update business cards. One figure rifles, anybody in town that had a business, we only had one person take us up on that. I did talk to a couple of people there about the upcoming events at Aggie. And handed out some information, not sure if they signed up or not, so. We didn't do any giveaways or anything like that, but so. I also heard that in general, the. The crowds were a little bit less this year than last year. I mean, some people said probably because of the heat, but. So, you know, we were present and another. Good job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Let's see, the next one is to discuss the October third Business Networking Event, so. I don't know if you've had an update on how many participants and where we stand.
I do.
Okay.
So I asked Chris this morning if she could send me a list of the folks that have registered. And there in total, there are seventy people registered. Now, that's a lot of sponsors as well, and so she said this fifteen businesses that have that have signed up. So, and if you want, if you'd like me to. Give you a list of the businesses that have signed up, I can do that. Or if you want me to pass my phone around and you'd like to just have a look, you know, that's fine with me, but let me see if I can. So All Out Services LLC. One Connection, their sponsor. C O G, I don't know what C O G is.
They were there last year. I don't believe there are tons. I mean, don't believe they're in Dayton. We're in. Maybe go grants.
Oh, is that what it is?
I believe that's who it is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They came last year.
Okay, okay. Mass Development's going to be there. Neighbor Works Housing Solutions. I don't know if they're a sponsor or not. Computer Barn is going to be there. The Town of Berkeley Selectmen are going to be there. Yeah, yep. So, so the Town of Berkeley. Let's see, Matt Chabot, Joe Freitas, Wendy Cochran, and Tabitha McCrowan are all from Berkeley, and they will be attending. The Friendly Fizz is a small business from Berkeley, and she's got a really nice little fun business. She'll be attending. Laura, you and your husband from Lane Gardens, Alter Ego Salon and Spa, Bristol County Wine and Spirits there in Berkeley. The Mark of Healing. So there's a one, two, three, four, five coming from that business. First, Do Communications, Energy No Limit, the E N L Gym people from Dayton.
Excellent.
Yep, Arujo, Kenny Arujo's coming. Obviously, the folks from Dayton, Rafa, Patricia Gales, Jonathan Gale, and a guest. Zetec, so Nick Garia, Laura Garia, and their son Nicholas. Zetec is in Mount Hope. They're the ones at the end of the Warner Boulevard. So at the end of Warner Boulevard, you know, that parking lot there that is in part of the Mount Hope. Zetec is right there in that in that part of the building.
We'll be looking at that area on the development plan in a few minutes.
Oh, good, great. Okay, good, good. Quality Air Care LLC. No Place Like Arm LLC.
It's opened in the past year, I think.
Oh, really? Awesome. And then Rebelo Construction. So those are the businesses, but like I said, there's like seventy people in total.
No Cooperative Productions?
They are a sponsor, so I imagine they might be showing up.
I don't see anybody registered.
Okay. Well, let me ask you, these businesses that are coming. Could they also use it as an opportunity to? Get hires?
Certainly, I think it would be a great opportunity for them to connect with Chris, okay? Chris, the Chamber President, because. I don't know if you're on the mailing list for the Chamber, but once a week, the Chamber sends out an email blast to everybody. Hundreds of people with companies that are hiring, so they could participate in that, I'm sure. So if there's anything there that, you know, Chris might be able to help with, I'm sure she would. So if anybody's looking to hire or is looking for jobs. Chris has a lot of information about that.
Okay.
Yeah. The other thing is, I asked our score folks who are regional, you know, southeastern Massachusetts, to do. Search on our email list, which is about four thousand businesses. And asked for Dayton and Berkeley, and so they they said they have seventy. So I asked them, can you send out that that email to them as well? So let's see if we can get some more from that. But anybody that feels like rattling cages, that would be great. You know, the more the merrier. It's a beautiful facility and, you know, we, Chris has got, you know, everything lined up in terms of refreshments and. Catering and that sort of thing, so. As you know, Lenny, it's a pretty good, it was a pretty good affair last year.
It was, yeah, yes, it was.
So, Joe, I hope you come this year. Can you come?
I knew that was coming.
No pressure or anything, Joe.
I will try my best. The only thing that could stop that is a good fishing day.
Is the fishing season now?
Yes.
It's an evening.
Well, yeah, but try getting up at two o'clock in the morning to go fishing and then go.
I get up at one and I'm gonna be there.
I have no excuse.
All right, guilt works.
Anything else around this that you want to bring up, John? I mean, questions about other than? I did send out another email blast on Friday, and one of the businesses you named signed up as a result of that.
Beautiful.
I have been putting out, it's on the town website, as a news update that went out like a week or two ago. I put it out there a couple of times on social media. Got a lot of people who was like, oh, this is great. I don't know if anybody signed up as a result of that, but.
Now, where should last minute registrations go if they do want to register? What's the preferred way for?
Well, I mean, you can go to a part of the area Chamber.
Okay.
And right on there, there's an events calendar.
Okay.
And you can go to the events calendar, see the event, click on it, and register right there. The thing is, is if you don't have the little promo code, it's going to cost ten bucks, so the promo code is Aggie, A G G I E.
Any capitals or?
Yeah, it was all caps, all caps, yeah.
But what building is that? I mean, I know where to go, but what is the name of the build?
Student Center, right? It's either the science, it's half science and half student center, but we're going to be in the student center.
Yeah.
That's one of the buildings, right?
Yes, yeah. Come check it out. No pressure or nothing. There's where it's this huge.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Well, but the parking, that parking, that part is small, so.
Addressing that. So near the student center on that side of Center Street. There's a very small parking lot, thirty, forty cars at the most. If you don't get there really early, that's going to be closed. Across Center Street, there's another parking lot past the crosswalk, so if you're heading towards the river. You know, past the crosswalk on the right, there's a driveway right there that goes to a much larger parking lot where you can park there. Then across the street to the student center.
They're not parking in the grass anymore.
No? Okay, no, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially with all this rain, I don't think you want to park there.
Oh, that's true.
Using the horses to pull the cars. Under new business, discuss any new business interests in town. There's none that I'm aware of. The, I did meet with the new town clerk because. Chico, I had an arrangement where he would share with me any new business certificates that came in. So I did talk to her. She said she would do that. She said she did actually have one. She couldn't lay her hands on it when I met her, so. She's gonna filter that down to me. I don't know whether it's a renewal of an existing, the expiry year, or whether it's a new business, but. She is going to pass that forward, and she's doing the same thing, which is when they sign up, there's a little. Handout that says, if you would like to be on the town business directory, which is posted on the town website. You know, fill this in right now, and you're good to go, and then she'll pass that forward to me, so. I think there are close to fifty businesses out there now on the town website, so.
I have one quick question, just going back to the previous topic, if you don't mind. We have contact information for people that were interested in starting a business, right? I mean, don't we, haven't we in the past year or so, when, you know, when we've been meeting? We've been meeting with some folks that have shown interest of starting a business in Dayton or looking for, you know, available property. I was wondering, are they on the mailing list as well?
You know, there's not a lot of them, but yes, I can add them to the mailing list.
I was just wondering, yeah, we should try to, you know, rattle those pages and see if we can get them to attend as well, right?
And that also actually reminds me, I said, we don't have any new business interests in town, but Joe, you were saying that. Somebody contacted you about looking to either purchase or buy some acres.
Purchase a piece of land to run a small farm, something around five acres, raise some cattle, some chickens.
How about the guy across the street from me? There's a hundred acres.
Yep, that's it.
I used to rent that, and I got kicked.
Money talks.
Who rented that?
I used to rent that.
Oh, yeah?
Really? How long ago?
Few years ago.
Yeah.
Had to be quite a few years.
No, not that.
You're a businessman for the right amount of money, you sell.
Yeah, no, I, from what I've been told, this guy doesn't have a lot of money, and he goes, there's no money really in it. He just enjoys animals and he wants to try to do something.
So roughly four acre parcel on Tremont Street that just got listed this morning.
Four acres?
Roughly, like three point eight. I think nine ninety six Tremont, I believe, was the address. I just saw it this morning.
Is that a house lot or?
There was a trailer home there that was previously demolished, so now it is vacant. But once upon a time, there was a trailer there that was demolished.
What if it was five acres? Very helpful.
Any? I mean, I'm looking at Barbara too. Barbara Stadia is here, and I know you have contacts with farmers. I don't know if you, any thoughts off the top of your head about available land or? That this guy could be referred to.
I've been thinking, what's good? Most of it was down on Main Street.
Right.
There's a lot of land in Dayton, and just because it's a field does not mean it's farmland. You guys know that. It it just isn't like where I am. All that up there is just clay and rocks. None of that is good, but down on Main Street, beautiful land.
Beautiful land there.
But if it's, it's just going to be for grazing, you know?
I imagine so.
Take a few years to build it up to.
Yeah. People don't realize it. They think, oh, it hasn't been used. You've got to put a lot of stuff into it and clear all that junk out. Takes a while to get good farmland.
Oh, you know what's listed right now is Mendoza Farm on Elm Street is listed right now.
I did mention, I mentioned that to Joe, that the tag is a little high, yeah, but it is. It's been there for six months or.
Right, it's been listed for quite some time, so they may be willing to entertain an alternative arrangement.
Yeah, I don't think that he's going to be able to get into anything that high. I mean, if you're gonna raise, I don't know, a dozen heads of cattle, how much are you gonna get for it at the end of the year?
You don't get anything at the end of the year. Three years, especially when you go through the winters.
Yeah.
Takes all your money right there.
So, but if anybody has any suggestions, if they could find Joe and he could have them to a person asking, so.
Is there any incentives out there for people that want to do that as far as finances go or? I mean, do we know of anything out there?
USDA and and M D A always have stuff, but it's, you know, a pile of paperwork that you gotta go through. And it's not always, you sometimes have to put money upfront.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's, you gotta be a paper. Person. With me, I would, nope, don't want anything to do with it, you know?
S P A has loan programs that, you know, there's, they have two loan programs. There's a seven A loan program and a five oh four loan program. Both of those loan programs. One can be used for equipment, the other one can be used for real estate, and it's up to like a half million dollars fixed.
It's a transition.
Five oh four, five oh four and seven A. Yeah, and.
And who who finances this?
So they're guaranteed by the S B A, but you can go to any S B A lender. And basically, you know, you apply to the S B A lender, and then they go to the S B A and S B A if they would back that one. If anybody would like any information on that, part of my score role, I hope businesses get those loans.
They still have the one out there. If you're a first time farmer, oh, I'm going back forty years, thirty years. They would give you up to three hundred thousand, very, very low interest, but only for first time farmers.
I don't remember seeing a specific farm loan program, but I will, I will.
I know it was for first time.
You wouldn't follow.
No, no, my second, my second life maybe.
Small business loans or business in general?
Small business. Yes, this is Small Business Administration, but a small business, according to the S B A, you know, is like. Couple of million in revenue, you know, yeah, I mean, that's still a small.
Change.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, really, they they're trying to get away from the big corporations, right? So, but there are small businesses generate millions in revenue, and they're still considered a small business.
Now, you're going to have a booth that.
Score's gonna be there, Linda. Linda will be there, Linda Fossar, chapter, chair, chairwoman, yeah, nice person, yeah.
Seed is also gonna be there.
Seed's also gonna be there.
Deal in agriculture?
They do, they do.
So they they offer low interest loans.
Yes.
Startup, help start costs for businesses.
Yes.
So this guy, you might want to invite him to the Aggie event.
I will do that.
He'll be there. He's looking to try and find something in Dayton. He's the perfect person like that we want to have to come to this event, so.
Perfect person, yes. And Seed will be there, Score will be there. With Seed, you have to be. In order to be qualified for us to apply for a seed loan, you have to be denied by a bank, by a commercial bank.
Okay.
So they're a second, second lender. They get grant money for economic development. So they use that grant money to help guarantee a higher risk loan.
And they also do micro loans.
Yeah, they do.
Which is, banks may not deal with micro loans, but, you know, but they are willing to rent.
Exactly, yeah.
Do you know of any grants available, and this is a long shot? To. Get the town to buy fairly good farmland that is unusable as house lots and then leasing or renting it out?
Well, I don't, I am not aware of that. We've talked a little bit about in our previous meeting. The paintball person, right, and saying that maybe we could, the town could lease that land to that small business, but. Nobody really wanted to have much to do with that, right?
Brings out a little issue. It's, it's, if something happens. The risk can be pretty high, and who does the town want to be involved in renting real estate? And that's the all leasing.
For that paintball example, because I believe he wanted like six months out of the year to be his business open, so it was like a spring summer sort of thing. And so my feedback was, if the town really wanted to get into like, we own parcels around town, we'd like to lease it. He's not really the ideal pilot case for that, you know, there are better scenarios that are long term and year round and. If the town wanted to have that discussion, he just wouldn't be the ideal example of, you know, doing it for the first time, but. It's something that town should probably talk about, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
Farming is probably a more ideal example than, you know, paintball, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're never going to get farmers back in here unless we have land for them to use. And even then, it's it's a long shot.
Those animals smell, that's.
Mine don't, mine don't.
What about vegetables?
Yeah, I'm thinking more of vegetables, to be honest with you, and not thinking about animals.
The only things I can think of that would allow the town to buy land would be, things like the CPC's got a certain amount of money for open spaces. Again, it's open space, you couldn't turn around and lease it to someone. And then also Conservation Commission maintains a fund where they receive the rollback fund. So if somebody has land that's in chapter and they take it out of chapter, they have to pay rollback taxes.
Right.
Essentially, the difference between what they would have paid or what they were paying in chapter, five years equivalent of that. And that goes into a fund under the Conservation Commission, which can be used for a couple of limited purposes, one of which is to buy conservation land. But again, I bought conservation lands, you can't exactly turn around and lease that out for other purposes, even agricultural, so. Unfortunately, the two avenues I can think of whereby the town could acquire land. I don't think there would be an opportunity through either of those avenues, but then I'm going to lease it out for a commercial purpose, even agricultural one.
You don't think even conservation, as far as putting blueberry bushes in, which is in lowlands or hanging?
I don't. I wouldn't want to speak, you know.
Right, they're both under conservation, because I know blueberry bushes are lowlands and.
Oh, yeah, I, my garden is mostly wetlands. I got blueberries all over the place.
Yeah, yeah, they need a lot of water. They really do. And and that's going in that direction, land that really can't be used and. It just deteriorates. If you're not using it, it's deteriorating. I know people say we need a lot of room for the deer and that, but.
No, let's kill them.
I don't.
All right.
Let's kill them.
Yeah, I know. I I get up plenty of nights, two in the morning to go get them out of the.
Wasn't pleasant, you know, farmer works all day and then you have to get them two in the morning.
Actually, this is our last item, so we can spend whatever time we want. I apologize for getting it to you so late. I only received it from Serpeth on Friday. So I gather it's every five years, Lenny, that the town updates like its economic development. So there's an update each Tuesday, and Serpeth has been helping the town, so. Zep Gonzalez is in charge of that, and she's shared a draft with us to look at tonight, and she's asking for feedback. She's also shared it with Mike Mullin, who'll go to the select, and she's gonna have a booth at, I believe she said, the Aggie event. And also the Fair Festival at Arujos come November, where she can ask for input from townsfolk and that sort of thing. All to just get, you know, input for this draft, but if you didn't. So I honestly have not had a huge amount of time to, let's see, I need a copy for myself, to review it. So I would say, you know, we can talk through it, but if people need more time to think about it. You can either send your comments to the set or send them to me, and I can put them all together and send them to what's asked. So this is the other part.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
So Dan, is this a work in progress or is this a?
This is a, it's a graph. Just sharing your graph.
I really liked all of the redevelopment graphic plans, and I think there was. Often, you would like them, but I could probably write them in the order that they're listed, but I like.
I was gonna start with the text base, but we can start with this. It's a. Go into this, I don't know.
Correctly, I believe that we're looking at where number thirty eight meets Old Somerset.
This is the old Princess House.
Yes, yep, so with the overall co-op is. And I love the idea of there being a. An event space, like a, like a brew, they call it a brewery, brew pub, like a brewery area. I love the idea of the rail trail connecting with, near the conservation area with a little bit of front park and the rail trail intersecting with the event venue. I think that that really represents a cool opportunity for people to, you know, go spend time at, you know, this, ideally, it's like a brewery in the proposal. But it's got, you know, an outdoor space and people can go and walk, do some shopping and connect to the rail trail. I thought that that was really cool, isn't it? Mashup of of natural scenery and commerce. This I really liked. The hurdle from what I saw in this site looks, I think, is a parking requirements, and luckily we've got. Planning board here, you can educate me if I'm looking at this incorrectly.
Now, this is where Princess House was?
Was it?
Well, people.
It looks like the issue, I think if I'm understanding it correctly, is that it looks like it's missing quite a bit of parking for what parking would be required. I don't know if that's our building or plan. I frankly know nothing about that part of the process.
Part of the planning, yeah.
I I can hear you, you're perfect, but in order for the public to actually see this. What we have here, it would probably be a good idea to get something.
Oh, yeah, we can put this up on the website.
An easel or something like that or on the website.
Yeah, we put it on the town website. Oh, wait, once this is.
It's, I mean, if you're sharing it with everybody, so I mean, there's no reason we can't share it. I just don't have it on a. On a U S B or something to stick it on there. I mean, they can hold it in front of the screen. That's about it, so. Oh, I literally, I just stacked paper.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, we could do that after.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
I I'd like to see that people.
Oh, yeah.
See it as not what we're talking about and understand what we're talking about.
Or we can take the opportunity of this being a recorded meeting to tell people that we intend to put this on the town website. Check back at some point.
Okay, you just did that, yeah.
And as I said, she's planning to be at Arujos in November, the, the Aggie event. But she's looking to get town input, so.
Now, who is this that you're talking about?
The Serpeth representative.
Okay.
With its updated development plan. When you were saying about parking and, so yeah, parking is controlled by guidelines from planning board. so yeah, parking is controlled by guidelines from planning board. It's also, it's affected though by like how many patrons and or employees you're expecting. So it's not like I mean, there is some bit about certain square footage.
Yeah, yeah, there is quite a bit about it.
But it's also like if a restaurant with a thousand square feet and a warehouse of a thousand square feet, you don't have the same parking requirement, so it all depends on what the mix is, like how much parking you need and makes sense. Sounds like she thinks there's like six fifty or so and it's up at Princess House now, but which is interesting, which needs a fifteen hundred, so. I also like that, and she made the point a couple of the places riverfront development. But most of the riverfront on the Dayton side. Either conservation or town owned.
Right.
Other than Shaw's. You know, Interplast.
Right.
Like power. Yeah, but they're not really on the river. Those are about the only places that have riverfront that isn't conservation. But this is one of them. One of those, it could look like now just.
So if I may, so would the, I want to try to work with some local developers to put some of these ideas in front of them and try to get some interest in buying on?
Buy in, what, what are you talking about?
So say, so this plan, right, this proposal, if you will, right, saying, oh, this would be a great idea if Dayton did this. How do we act on this, I guess, is what I, let's say we go forward and it's known all says, hey, this is a great idea. Do we then, would we then work with a developer, a commercial developer to try to make this happen, right?
I, I have no problem with that because I know one individual in this room is very good friends with a major developer who did incredible things in the town of Wareham. And that boom is to the waterfront down away, it's substantial.
Yeah.
They're out there. And you know, right now, interest rates are high.
Yeah.
But the next five years, they will come down.
Yes.
And we'll see a boom again. As the MBTA line opens up in this area. A lot more opportunities and people are coming this way. You're going to see tremendous growth in housing. And with housing comes needs. Lots, recreation needs, restaurants. Jobs, so. All it takes is capital.
Yeah, yeah.
I actually heard of the uh the uh buildings that's being I don't know if it started already. In Taunton, near where the train is, gonna be going by two hundred and fifty units.
Yeah.
Very high price. And they're all taken. I say, high price? Twenty-five hundred to thirty-seven fifty for two and three bedrooms. Where's it gonna go?
That's mandated by the T. Did you, I'm, I'm sure if you're aware of that, that any city or town that has. Right, is mandated, yeah, yeah. Resource, if we were to kind of come up with um maybe a list of prospect businesses or industries that could be, as John said, to try to kind of find some buy-in. That could maybe be approached and recruited to, to take interest in Dayton and maybe sit down and negotiate whether it's, you know, a tip or some other kind of package that attracts people to come. Would, would that be an appropriate deal for Serpeth or are they more of the planning? I'm, I'm speaking from a place of ignorance.
We can ask, and this is actually, you know, I'm glad it's just, I feel a bit lost in that too. I mean, in my mind, I look at it and I say, well, this is all privately owned right now. Somebody has a business there. No, it's great that the town says we think it should be X. But then it's no thank you. It's only this. Right, it's all occupied. So obviously, it's, it's not like the town's going to make any effort to push the person out. At lovers anyway, but it's not, you can't. However, it, it's, it's more, I think, of does the town go out and market? Like find people like Lenny's referring to you when he said somebody in this meeting knows somebody.
He's busy developing a barcade at the moment.
Okay, but you know, somebody like your friend. To market to people like that who could come in and assess it and say like, oh, this does look interesting, I could do it. And then, you know, they start to talk to the owners and say, I would like to purchase this, that. Maybe they find an agreement, maybe they don't, but you know, that sort of thing. But I agree that I, I feel the same way. It's like, what levers does the town have? And I speak from ignorance because I.
Right, I could see the potentially the town um working out some sort of tentative, whether it's a tip or whether it's some sort of incentive. Working out some sort of arrangement with the buyer, which would be kind of factored in, you know, which kind of becomes baked in. Or whatever offer they would want to make to the landowner. The offer that they make would be offset by their anticipation of whatever future incentive. Kind of work out with them, whether it's infrastructure. Case may be.
Now, John, I know you're good friends with Dick Schaefer and I am as well. And in Taunton there was a group, Dick was a part of it, Jerry Crowder was a part of it, that went out and wind and dine developers to try to bring them in at the time. The, the Taunton industrial park was vacant. And they brought in General Dynamics and Pepsi, later on, John Henry and the Boston Globe. Dayton doesn't have that. And I see that, I see the DDIC as potentially working with the town, being that mechanism. Um, there is potential. I mean, we've seen it with this. And there are developers out there. I know there's some zoning issues that frustrate some of us. But there is some industrial land out there and has potential for some development of that land.
I know that Mass development is gonna be at the Aggie event next week. And their sole purpose in life is to work with developers to come up with creative ways to make development happen for economic growth. So um it used to be Jay Petikos was the gentleman's name and he just left to, to go work for the city of Ton. Um so I don't know who's uh gonna be there on Tuesday, but there will be somebody there for mass development and that's what they do. They work at the state level locally, but are connected to the state. And they get grant money and all kinds of money and they're connected to developers and so I think that's another avenue.
Is this on the sewer line?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Is Dayton interested in having more residential property, like?
I don't think this is.
What is RES then?
Where does she have RES on this?
Yeah, B and C, it's huge.
I believe.
I don't know. Interplast, yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is part of their track's proposal. That, you know, housing to be included.
Yeah.
I agree with you that ninety-nine out of a hundred Bayconians say no thank you.
I'm just thinking of souls and.
But um, yeah, but I mean, if we're talking about where in the town you could actually build out something big. It's Interplast and it's Spring Street. She mentioned Zenith here, which great to think about cleaning up brownfields, but that's billions and
Right.
long haul and, but those are the two big sites.
What is happening with um Spring Street? I hear there's some issues going on there. Or are we not allowed to?
At this point in time. Because in the early stages of some legal battles. It's hard to talk about it. There's a potential for litigation.
Okay.
As it's up today, as a matter of fact, so. It's wise not to that get into a discussion about that property.
Now, this one, it's confused me a little bit from a parking perspective, the Spring Street.
Okay, where are we?
Uh the second one, Spring Street. This one from a parking provider is confusing me. So it's, it looks like brewery slash retail area. It looks like don't have any parking proposed. Am I misunderstanding?
Um and it's a little bit of gray area with.
Right, when I look over parking provided is what I'm. When I look at the table, I see parking provided, this is hundred fifty-six for building A. Which is. Which I don't know if that's just an Excel issue, if there was figures there, because building B has plenty of gray area that I I have a hard, and building C also has, I mean, has an obvious parking. So I have a hard time.
Yeah, it looks like. And what she has here is parking provided.
Right, right, so.
That's worth double checking with that.
We have a source data for that one. But um otherwise. I believe that this whole area is uh northside fire dis, well, the water supply.
It's been wired with the NLP for, you know, very high.
Those utilities, so. Right. Zoning is appropriate for it, the, the neighborhood already is built in a way that accommodates an industrial presence.
There is. It is. Yeah, I'm not sure about that. Building used to exist and was knocked down. It is brownfield. Okay, so um if you were to touch it in any way. And maybe remediation requirements. Or built on top of it, if it's built on top of it for those same reasons, unless you remediate it. So whatever. You know, when you think about those sort of things, it's like the building as is, I think for the most part, you know, no new construction up there unless ground field remediations.
Now, Dan. On the open spa, is open space doing the bulk of the work from Taun, from Dayton?
On what topic?
On this plan or is this mostly Serpeth?
No, this is, the open space hasn't yet to have its first meeting, its first.
So all this is Serpeth?
It's all Serpeth.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, this is just their track, so.
Okay.
The update, also the economic development plan, so.
I like the emphasis on event space and having venues and places where people want to shop, but will go and congregate, because you have a place that is still rich in just beauty. We got a lot of country charm as a community, so I think that having things that are gonna draw people to the three mile river, to our little river. I think that's really cool. I like that they, the, the plan also emphasizes agritourism and trying to carve out niches for that. I know it's, it's difficult trying to squeak money out of that, frankly, but um but I like that these represent a place where people can go shop, walk around. Um it's like an outdoor mall type experience, except with some dress. I like it.
Now. Was, was that the primary author of this?
Yeah. But I mean, she probably is working with her, but she's, she's in charge of.
This is awesome.
She has that job now.
Then in a cool twist of irony, password Zenica. So, you know, even, even though this is long-term planning, I think this is more in the realm of long, 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 long term.
Let the breath of fresh air. Dayton didn't always do that.
So if I, if I may add, I'm not sure if this is the time to do it or not, and if not, I can, you know. We're silent for a while, but if you remember.
Good work, Dan.
But I'm trying to. Um, a couple of meetings ago, or if you remember, almost a year ago, I think. Um, I was talking about the Russells and how the Russells have a winery, Westport Winery in Westport. And they still own property on Horton Street in Dayton.
Wow.
Yes, they own a number of acres still in Dayton and I have sent him a number of emails. I have him, because I'm a former Horton Street resident, so I said, hey, I, you know, I used to live down the street from you and that sort of thing, trying to get his attention. Um, I have not been able to get his attention, but when you talk about agricultural and consumer, like something that was gonna draw some like a winery. Getting rid, the same concept, they're casting like the brewery. It's a, it's a clean industry, right? It fits with the agriculture of uh Dayton and and so I don't know, I'm, I have tried and tried to get in touch with them, because I think that's kind of a win-win situation. Right? I mean, if he already has all the equipment and everything to produce wine. Pardon me?
And the knowledge.
And the knowledge, right? Why couldn't he use that acreage in Dayton? For more, for more agriculture, more, you know, vineyards, that he can take those grapes to Westport and, and process them.
Well, I think the reason he went to Westport because that land up there is not so great.
Oh, and on Horton Street?
Yes, I had uh years ago, oh, I'm going, probably fifteen, twenty years ago. I met with them, developed that land that you're talking about. And uh I honestly don't recall with the place, but uh there is very little useful land there. There's a lot of
ledge or something.
Ledge is, and there's, there's issues with it. That's why we, we backed out of it.
I think that, and you need a certain type of air also to have a certain type of grapes and that's why there are so many wineries out in that area. They get the ocean, the salt. And that has a lot to do with that and, and Westport turnips. Westport turnips are a big thing out there and that's.
That's what?
Westport turnip, big white turnips.
Right.
Actually, we had a hurricane years ago and I had this genius idea to do Westport turn, turnips and Lenny was kind of upset with me, hurricane pain. And the, the eye, it was fine until the eye of the hurricane went by, but then it brought all the salt air in. And Westport lost all their turnips. And I made a killing. That was one of the few years. But yeah, um that has a lot to do with that. That's why I said Main Street in Dayton phenomenal land. There are a couple of great places in Dayton and that's one of the few. The other one is um Divines, which was Reed's. Um, which is quite a bit of its in Taun, some is in Dayton. Great land a, and a lot of it's all irrigation too. That would be prime to invest in.
How about the Reed's property that's at the end of Horton Street? It's not good? That's not, because he's farmed that for years and years and years, right?
Well, you farm it because you have to farm it, but that's one of the reasons he has blueberries in there.
Okay, so that's.
That's very similar to what I have up on the hill. But that's one of the reasons why, why there's no wine there.
Yeah, one place that in fact, that some people applied that they were interested, it was on Allen Street. Uh, first house on the right that was actually farmed. Uh, first house on the right that was actually farmed.
Was that Sanson's land?
No, I don't think so, Maderis.
Maderis, yeah.
That, somebody actually talked to the real estate agent, they were looking to buy the land, they were gonna turn those. Ten acres or so into a vineyard. The money didn't, didn't come in.
Really?
You know, they didn't agree, so somebody else bought it, from all I know, that they're gonna build one house there. I don't know what they're gonna do with the back one. That wasn't my thought, because I bid on that, I was gonna put a vineyard there myself. That's what I've been doing, making wine.
Really? Yeah, that is, a, a lot of it came in. I know a lot of guys that are making their wine this weekend.
So the next part was like a bullet list, um, that she included of the topic around zoning, natural resources. Infrastructure and so forth. So again, this is um a bit lengthy if you haven't had time to study it, so but if um. Have you looked at this?
I have. Number one, zoning one, I like that they led this one, because I think some of their other more impactful recommendations stem from this. That thorough review and comprehensive update in the zoning bylaw to address formatting, land uses, dimensional regulations. Parking requirements I underlined in supplemental development regulations, um, stormwater, which I know that that's being. Looked at right now, I know that the MS four requirements are being looked at by Stormwater Committee right now. Um, that I think is important, because a lot of these, we saw parking, it's kind of the. Um, so I think encouraging some, looking at that, I think a lot of the uh recommendations will kind of flow from that. Number two is um. A lot of work has been going lately, which is fantastic, into trying to streamline and clarify and make more transparent. The town's current permitting process, um, so kind of the conveyor belt from, I wanna build something to, I successfully built something. You know, how to navigate all the steps in between, um, there's been an ongoing conversation between all different boards and committees relevant to permitting. On how to make this a better process, and um, right now, that's really in its infancy, but once that process starts to really gel. I think that that will create a link for us to kind of speak from a position of advocating for business and for commerce. Um, right now, I think that this just, it's still being worked out so much that.
It's like if permitting are y'all including like the communication between different committees.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. But yeah, I agree, so they're, they're making progress on.
The pack team is, is uh doing a lot of work in this area, and then individual members and some individual employees have been, had, had some really meaningful. Discussions in this area, and um. I think that that's going to be a major opportunity for us, but I don't think we're there yet. I think we might have some time before we're really.
For Wednesday night.
Oh, perfect, there we go. So I think that we're gonna eventually have an opportunity to step in there a really meaningful way, but I just don't think we're there yet. Three, I really skipped, just because it's reconcile town goals along Main Street with dimensional requirements and a lot of users, it's just goes back to. Think that a lot of planning, line, main street, building, it's gonna hinge a lot on long term remediation. Where it's really not worth a whole ton of energy right now. Um, this I wanted to call out, number four, which is facilitate the operation of home-based businesses by clarifying zoning and removing barriers. Think that we'll get a lot of valuable information in the board themselves, that's how they do their little Q and A with us. Um, I think learning about what we can do um regarding home-based businesses, I think we'll get some good information there.
I do have an update too, which is because I attended a pack meeting in. March or April?
With a list of, remember, we had come up with some draft, um, zoning suggestions about how to. Uh, make it easier to operate a home-based business and of different types. Um, and they had reviewed it, and they said they'd get back to me with some comments and. And the next month was busy, and the next month was busy, so I brought it up again to Mike, so he is gonna invite uh me to a future pack meeting. At least, um, where, cause I would like to get some recommendations before the planning board. For them to look at, and uh meeting with, you know, around some of the restrictions around home-based business towns. If some of that makes sense, you know, so loosen.
Right, there's a really cool recommendation, actually, do that, so. Coming up. I liked, I really loved the, the space in the uh, the business ideas that got proposed here, that kind of invite people outdoors and invite people to congregate. To that end, promoting and protecting the wild natural resources section, one and two, uh, enhancing access and connections to the wild and scenic taunton and three mile rivers. And then prioritizing connections uh based by the rail trail through the Taunton River Trail. Uh, I love those ideas, I think that almost, um, you know, they give a destination business. Uh, a lot of malls have gone out of business that were just kind of shopping centers, but the ones that survived seem to be the ones that are. Creating destination locations, right? They're the ones that have the arcades, or the go-karts, or the bowling alleys, or the bar and restaurant, or the, you know, the, the stuff to do. Um, I think that. We have really great natural resources, so I think calling that out is good. And then. Specifically around the artisan businesses, oh yeah, so to jump back up to zoning five, this was what we were talking about. Integrate artisan zoning, provide space for small scale manufacturers that produce little to no vibration noise from other nuisances, meaning they can. Wide variety of industrial, commercial, or even residential districts. I think where some of these, like specifically the Spring Street Mill Complex proposal, and it blends into the surrounding residential neighborhood. In a way that if a project like this really did come to fruition. Where there's the little park, and there's the rail trail, you could see people kind of just going and meandering around the area, right? This would be an area that kind of invites people to go, and if some of these artisan shops that don't create a nuisance, are creating noise, are creating caustic smells. Anything weird, um, are in kind of that area where that membrane where the residential neighborhood meets the, the industrial area. Um, that seems like it's an opportunity to kind of let people in by creating a uh, an issue.
I did wanna ask Joe, cause he's been on the planning board for quite a while. Was that, I, I know she, here she's calling it artisan zoning, I don't know if that's a new term, but was there ever discussions in the past about like this? Really light footprint, but in the industry type thing that, that kind of fit in even in, you know. Doesn't have to be an industrial zone, it kind of, you know, kind of fits in between.
None that I could even follow where that's just.
Um, under infrastructure and maintenance, um, one and four go together is pursue development of an intermunicipal agreement with nearby towns. I agree that that will help, there are a lot of things that could, that could be helped by that, especially as um, you know, eventually things like water. Especially water pressure are eventually gonna become more contested than they have been in the past. Um, it's difficult a little bit, where we've got multiple utility constraints around that area to kind of. Put some more cooks in the kitchen as far as coming to intermunicipal agreements, so that's an obstacle there, but it dovetails with number four. What the Titan Water District coordinated expansion and anticipate future needs, I'd also say probably the same thing with our Titan Fire District. Um, pursue funding to implement design and engineering plans to increase water and sewer capacity. We've already done the sewer study, but it came out to the tune of like twenty-five million dollars, I think, something like that, which. I checked the coach cushions and I couldn't find it.
And the price for a mile keeps going up.
Right, right, and that, exactly, that was twenty-five million dollars and, you know, four or five years ago, money was just, yeah, thirty million dollars today. But I do think that that's something to continue to look at, if grant funding becomes a trouble or something like that, because one of the primary. Targets that we have to move sewer down is a primarily industrial zoned and is in a zone area. So it could, if it moved down one thirty-eight, it could be good long term.
And just before you go on, like to the next sections, I was surprised that. The graph overview or I think it's, nothing was called out about group forty-four.
I was curious about.
The infrastructure, we talked about extending sewer, up forty-four is. Not to be expensive, but it's expensive than down thirty-eight, you know, and the idea. Businessman forty-four to uh makes more.
Connection in that area, approaching.
So that was one of the things I was gonna get feedback is, you know, she seemed to have not included that.
Well, there, there is substantial land in there, I don't, I couldn't tell you. Quality or suitability of it, but I know there is available land over there, and just from a traffic management perspective. That's really good for Dayton, right? Because it's not cutting through Dayton, it's not in the geographical center of Dayton. It really is up and down Taunton, which is already equipped to handle pretty large amounts of traffic. So that, that really could be, I was surprised to not see something like that proposed. And um.
Yeah, something.
Couple of things in regards to forty-four, because that has been something that the city has found in. Under Mayor O'Connell's administration, has kind of reached out to us, that they have the water. And the sewer anytime we wanna tie in. That's the positive side, the negative side is there are a lot of residents on forty-four that are fearful. That that section will become like rainy. So there is some resistance. The development down there. They understand that once the sewer line goes in, then. So comes the industry, so there is some pushback.
Right, I, I think that'll probably be part of the process, really anywhere, right? Cause not, not my backyard.
Yeah, that's, that's what we find in anything, you know, everybody wants everything, but as long as you don't put it behind me or. But you know what, it is what it is, gotta survive.
And then um. The Dayton character and neighborhood, I thought the number one, develop a coordinated wayfinding and soundness model for townwide multi-use. Conservation and recreation spaces, assets and opportunities. I like that idea, I feel like they echoed that same idea. By trying to monetize our open spaces in a way that doesn't involve destroying them. I think they did a good job proposing that, I like the inclusion of little parks and scenic areas, I like that the rail trail has been highlighted prominently. And be, you know, foster a business environment, but also keep Dayton, Dayton at the same time, and um, you know, there's gonna be. Gonna be issues no matter what, we've grown saints in all things, but um, I like that they keep echoing. I'm sure more takeaways from, you know, three o'clock in the morning tonight. But uh, this afternoon, you know, go, go through this.
You know, actually, along that same topic, if you could jump back to zoning or whatever. Provide clear expectations for rural landscape design, but answer maintain that is rural character. Particularly along industrial subdivision, quick to thinking of like County Street. So it's the end of County Street where it's, there's no trees, it's just concrete and dirt and.
Right.
You know, and she's proposing planning guidelines around. Um, design.
So I like that idea.
Around building this. So to keep like looking, you know, when you have businesses, keep it looking rural and natural and.
Um, I like that idea, I mean, obviously it, it sells in the details, but yeah, isn't it concept? I mean, I really like that.
Yeah, that area down there, if any house ever got built, it'd have to be built in the style of how daddy was used to.
I don't think she was talking, maybe she was talking about housing, I think she was talking more about just.
That was such a cool looking building.
Right, yeah.
No, no, that, that was it.
Uh, she did call out the DDIC in one part, which is, she said, establish if. That work, of Titans, all businesses, particularly hiding home-based businesses, so. Formal, I don't know whether that means expanding the DDIC from seven people to seventeen people, or it means, you know, having a. A, a group of people, business owners in town, that we lean on and go to regularly and get input from. You know, we've seen from the Aggie event and from other things, it's kind of hard to get people to participate. So it's not like something you do easily, like they're gonna. But it's also like, if we did that, what, would we be envisioning as, as this add-on? You know, adjunct group of people that, business owners that we deal with, what would we want? This uh, an advisory group that we bounce ideas off of, uh, I mean, what?
Maybe that's what she's talking about.
Yeah, I know, but I didn't know what we, I should call this up specifically, I think it seemed like I had some ideas many years.
Well. Real need, and. If the keyboard warriors on social media put down their keyboard, and rather, rather than criticize, come forward and help this town. By the number of them that are out there, we'd be able to accomplish a hell of a lot, and really. Take this town in a very positive direction, that's my frustration, and I'll be saying that more often. Because. Look at open space. Look at the work on these two changes. And how much the volunteers, if they would get involved in the subcommittees, they could be found, formed. What we could do for Dayton, so. You know, very grateful and thankful people like all of you sitting around the table this evening, will give up your time to do something. But just think if we had ten more like what's sitting here today. And, I mean, there's a lot of work here. An open space struggle to get people to join. And they still have room for a couple more members.
Sure, we only have three, and I think it's a five member committee, so.
And this is.
I did hear from one other person who's planning to put in an application, also before, I think.
And, and having a little bit of understanding of what Taunton does. All of you here are saving this town of Dayton incredible amount of money. Cause in Taunton, they pay for urban planners, and they pay a lot of money for urban planners. Seventy-five to ninety thousand dollars, so.
So there's still.
But on the other side of the. Can make a difference. Make this town in a positive, in a more positive direction.
So, but if you, if you just wanna think about that idea, it's like, she's recommending that we have. I guess something like an advisory group that we lean on of business owners. Oh, how would we envision using that, or asking people to join, or what would their role be, and, or is it a good idea at all? Something to think about.
Is there something, it should be one committee, or should it be a committee made up of various groups like DDIC? Zoning, planning, and have a, a horde would represent of each.
I think she's suggesting find a group of business owners in town. That you can lean on and get advice from and take suggestions from, and that's what she's suggesting.
Which is what we're trying to do by all of this outreach, right? I mean, it's very frustrating. And I, I said so on your, your part as well, right? I, both Dan and I have beat the pavement, you know, to. To knock on small business doors, they don't wanna be discovered, you know, seems like, right?
We have, I'm sorry, I didn't. We have. Our office manager, who's zoning and planning, she is extremely helpful. With anyone that walks into that office. We tried that one time, you know, by talent people, this was in the very beginning of this uh. Being created, this, this board, and. Some people got offended that we were making suggestions to these uh people that will pull in permits and stuff. That we were kind of stepping on their toes, and so we kind of backed out. And so we kind of backed out. But. I honestly think. That if somebody wants to come in and they want advice. I think Carrie does a very, very good job at it and.
So knowledgeable.
Yeah, extremely knowledgeable and um. The problem that we have is that a lot of people are told what to do. They're given the paperwork on what to do. And they just choose to do it a little different from that. And then when they show up with the paperwork. No, this is you. You did this, but you didn't do that. And that's the, you know, that's the problem. I I don't think it is. That their people are not getting the right advice. I think it's people that are not listening. To the advice. We just had something similar to that the other day and uh. You know, what do you do? You know, it's it's. I mean, am I out of line or no? Okay. So getting more people involved, yeah, it it somebody, all it takes is one person to come up with a good idea. And tip off with it, but. We don't have. What it takes in this town. Landwise to do certain things. That is a big, big issue and a lot of the land that we have. Has not, nothing has been done with it for a long period of time. So what happens is trees fall into the brooks. So it creates more wetlands. Uh, nothing is maintained. So the wetland keep on keeps on expanding. Those are problems. You know, years ago, the farmers would clear out the brooks. The water would be directed into those brooks. The rest of the land was not. Affected. Now they are affected and it's gonna keep on getting effect and the the conservation doesn't allow us to touch. You follow what I'm saying? It's it's um. You know, it's a no-touch zone. Does not matter. You know, you just can't touch it. So the these are 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 problems that I don't know where where they're gonna go, but they are a problem. Unless you guys know of something else that I don't, but uh. I mean, even I I I think the only thing good is if somebody was to. Buy a piece of land that's wetland and just put animals in there if they even allow that. You know what I'm saying?
I don't think they could.
I don't think they would. Because that's the only way to to get the growth. Of of the land, the weeds and things like that to go down, you know, it's.
One thing I thought it would be a huge amount of work, but one thing I would like to have, it would be handy at least is um. Of all the parcels in town, given the zoning as it exists and, you know, qualifications in terms of wetlands and so forth. One of the big things that happens is. Like with the agriculture, with the paintballs, people say like, oh, it was. Um, Avila textiles when they wanted to put up like a ten thousand square foot building, we couldn't, you couldn't find anything for them. Um, is. What does Dayton technically have available? Like, what is? A ten acre parcel and nine acres are wetlands. And so really, it's a one acre parcel for development. And with the various zonings, but if somebody said, you know, it's owned by somebody, that's okay. It's like if somebody said, I need an acre to do X. We could easily say, well, these are the options. They're all privately owned. You'd have to talk to the landowners. Maybe they're interested, maybe they're not interested, but. Given the zoning and the land requirements. This, this is kind of where you could look. But we don't really have that today, other than honestly, Joe's brain. If anybody comes to town and says, I'm looking for X. I just say, uh, have you talked to Joe yet?
No, but it 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 it's true. We don't really have land that we can say you can put this there.
Or at least we don't know that we have it. Maybe we do if we can keep track of it. But we don't, you know, and there's a lot, you're right, that's wetlands. Zoned in appropriately, but. You know, there may be. Options that. Even if it's not a huge amount, but there's options out there that. Right now it's a house, but it could be something else if the person for the right money wanted to sell. A business could go in there, you know, and or whatever, but we don't even know those options right now, I don't think. Now, getting to the point where we do all that, that's. Enormous, you know. Tracking, but. It would be nice to get to that point, I think.
Yeah, an ingredient.
It would.
Yeah, exactly. Basically, yeah. Of usable land, yeah.
If we had that, I think we we could make it grow.
Yeah.
But not having that land. You want to sell your land?
I have a lot of wetlands. I have thirty acres and fifteen of it is all wetland.
Have you tried clearing it out a little?
No. We have a old log and row that we keep clear so we can keep checking on it. But other than that, nope, we know it's wetland and it's wetland and the deer have a good time out back.
Goats make beautiful. Land clearing.
They do. They do, yeah. And we have huge coyotes in my backyard.
Oh.
Huge. I think they're coy dogs actually. But um, yeah, I like it that way. Love it that way. I've been approached so many times for the other side behind the log cabin.
Yep.
Um. A bit of a solar farm there. At least four times, like, you know.
Thank you.
I just like it. Nice and quiet. But that's me, what my kids do. God bless them. You know. And a daughter.
Oh, you do.
So I know it just came out like I just had to do Saturday. Do other people have any comments now or is it at least if you could just like look at it and then feed your comments back to me or directly to Lizette? You know, she can kind of incorporate them. That's what she wants. That's why she's starting to share it with everybody. She just wants that feedback.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm I'm sure I'll have more. Actually, I'll spend some time as well.
Um, there's a couple of things that are not on the agenda, but uh, just came up, so I just wanted to include. One is. We've been doing the spotlight interviews, all has, and we've actually only done one so far. But we actually did a second one just this past Saturday for a Dayton House of Pizza. So cable company had a little handheld. They went out there. So uh, with some editing, that should be out there in a couple of weeks. Uh, under the sun still would like to do it when the season slows down for them. So, you know, we'll get that out there, see if um, other people are interested.
And we can catch them post-harvest pre-Christmas trees.
If doing it on a Saturday is probably hard.
Yeah.
Because they have the two locations.
If a business wanted to reach out, how would they reach out?
The easiest thing now is um. If you go to the DDIC's um, business page, not business page, our page on the town website, there's a link to a forum. It's kind of like the volunteer forum, you know, but it's a link to a forum on there that you open it up. Just check off what you're interested in. Is it the spotlight? Is it being listed on the um? On the town website, the business directory and you put in your business information. Um, I get an automatic email or the DDIC mailbox gets an automatic email. So then we can just reply to them and, you know, go from there. That's the easiest way. So the second thing is um. Barbara came this evening. We've had an open position here uh, for several months now. Um, and um. Lenny had mentioned that Barbara might be interested. I I didn't realize she was coming this evening, otherwise I put it on the agenda, but. Um, she is interested in joining the DDIC. Um, so I don't know if people have questions for her or if you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself. I know you know most of the people in the room, but.
Yeah, I I think, yeah, you guys know I've been a bomber in town for fifty years and. Instruction company. So that's where I find out where the ledgers and. Conservation and um. That's about it. And I was on the Board of Health and because of ill, I got very sick with my heart. Um. I was in the hospital five weeks out of seven weeks this spring and summer, so it's been a long recovery, but I'm going in the right direction and like. And um. Leonard asked me. If I'd be interested. At first I said, no, I'm too sick. I was actually at Brigham when he called me. And um, but I'm feeling better and I would definitely, especially saving some of that land. I mean, Main Street. Is phenomenal land down there and I would just hate to see more go to Hupsus. Because we don't have any other land as good as that in this town. We really, really, do you agree with me?
I I agree with you a hundred percent. I I perked. Quite a bit of land across the street from you where those two big houses are. I perked that and then I was supposed to buy it, but it didn't work out. Uh, somebody came in and paid a lot more for it. Uh, the one, the a hundred acres. That was, I built that house. I uh, did some perking over there. That land is really, really good. There's some really good loom, even out back.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, I put a um. I crossed the river. I put a bridge there to to get on to the other side. I mean, I know that land fairly well, even the one. Further down Main Street, used to be a cow farm. Uh, then they started planting corn.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh, that's also, that's beautiful, beautiful. Farm land.
That's nice.
Uh, it really.
It is.
Uh. Other than that, I. Or the Sousa farm too. I heard that's.
Yes.
That's being talked to.
On Main Street?
Yes, uh, somebody is, I heard the the. It's a small town, so.
Yeah, that's not as good as as lower, but it still is good and that is.
Yeah.
And to be honest, I don't know why they haven't sold off before.
I'm I'm surprised that there isn't a solar farm on there because that is the most perfect beast.
It is, it is the drainage and everything.
Nice and clear. Oh, it's. But.
It is. But. If that lower land goes into houses, that will be a sin. I mean, a sin.
Uh, I can tell you the hundred acres across the way, Lenny.
Mm-hmm.
It's not gonna go. They might be able to pull one of there. That's it. That I know.
Yep.
Oh, good. I live right next to that.
He has, he has a lot of ideas. You said the key word. While ago about the wonderful loom that's there.
But any question?
Unfortunately, what makes you interested in joining DDIC?
I want to get back in the town. I learned a lot when I was on the Board of Health. I never realized the Board of Health. Was such a large. Responsibility. And I really enjoyed it.
I've heard of, known the Katavia family for over fifty years. My father Leonard. And Barbara's. Husband Leonard. Um, worked together on projects. That had to do with septic and sewage. I had the pleasure of serving. As a selectman and working with Barbara. With the Board of Health. Um, business. Bombing. Community involvement. Stop much and she'll be a wonderful addition to this board. The only one little problem. You can't vote on her tonight. So it's not on the agenda.
All right.
As soon as you said that, I thought it'll be.
It's on my agenda.
Mine too.
I know, um, I will only be getting better, guys, I promise, so.
Oh, as soon as you do.
Okay.
We'll vote on it. I'll make sure it's on my agenda.
Our next agenda. And then we can send out.
I appreciate it. I really look forward to it. Seems like a really.
I think it'd be great for me.
Yeah.
Commission, excuse me.
Haven't heard the rest of it.
What's the rest of it? Next time, I'm not, I'm not next to you next time.
So you're suggesting if we had uh, a one-off meeting or something between now and our next, like a Zoom meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, just the wanted items special meeting, yeah.
Yeah, you can do that anytime. Just, you know, follow the forty-eight hour posting.
Would, is there a date or would people be interested in doing that just for the agenda item of discussing Barbara joining the meeting?
Yeah, I I have Fire Station Building Committee Thursday night at seven, which is the earliest day that we would be able to do it just. For OML, we have to post forty-eight hours in advance. So if we're close tomorrow, Thursday would be the earliest.
I'm sorry, what's the difference whether we do it next time and. Swear and then at the, you know, the beginning of the meeting and.
But we should have to get sworn in by, she would have to go to the the next selectmen meeting and then sit with the. They appointed and then the following business day, she would have to get sworn in by the town clerk.
Sorry.
Um, so pretty much for me, Thursdays. Or like uh. Like the the only nights I would be available. They would have to be anything. Um. Do people, do you want to set up a meeting for next Monday? As a meeting, would that be possible or?
So maybe soon.
That be second. I have an obligation on first Wednesday. Yes, I do, uh, Monday, excuse me. Tuesday, it's the second. Yes, I do have an obligation that night.
I will say that.
Six on, I could do. Prior to six.
Yeah, I will say the only thing that. Not doing this, waiting to our next meeting, waiting for Barbara to to be sworn in as she's sworn in, is her being able to vote. Doesn't mean she can't join us next time, participate, give her input. She just would be a voting member until this is all settled, so. In that respect. Maybe we can just wait till the next time. Put it on the agenda. Send it to the selectmen. You're still very much welcome to join, participate, give your input and feedback. And. We just, you know.
The only problem I have with that is you meet at the end of the month. And. Our next meeting, our October meeting, it'd be like the thirteenth. So if you had a special Zoom. Then we could, we could appoint her on the thirteenth.
Okay, because, yeah, we can, we want to figure out a date then for this, for this Zoom meeting.
Yeah, I I could do um, I could do that Monday, anytime prior to like five thirty.
Okay.
Uh, then I could do that Tuesday or Thursday. I would just have, I would have to zoom in for that because my wife is, works on that Tuesday night.
Okay, so um. I unfortunately would not be able to do anything before six.
Oh, okay.
Um. Unless.
If there's a rest of a quorum, if there's otherwise a quorum, then uh.
That's true. We really just need, uh, I think, four people. The quorum, but Thursdays. In the evening, or actually anytime during the day I could do, I don't know.
Well, I could do this Thursday at six thirty, so I've got Fire Station Building at seven.
Join a Zoom meeting this Thursday at six thirty. Yeah, you just call. Yeah, call into this, yes, a phone call. Oh, I'm sorry, but I can't get it set up with a forty-eight hour notice by this Thursday.
Oh, no, we could, because if we do it by. It just has to be forty-eight hours prior. So if we posted it tomorrow morning. For Thursday at six P M or whatever time it was going to be, that would give us.
So I could make that, sounds like Paul could make it, Joe could make it dialing in. I just need one more person who could make, you could make that, okay? Can make it as well, okay. I'll do that. I'll send that off this evening.
And.
This be the one agenda item.
All in, in here.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Leanne can help you.
Yeah, I, it'll be the same. So I know it's at the top of the. Of that item here, yeah. I'll I'll send them up here.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome back to go.
And then the last item, it though. So let me just finish the rest of this here. So um, correspondence, we don't have any. Um. Public input. None. Um, approval of minutes for the last time. I did not have the minutes available, so. We have both the meeting minutes of July twenty-fourth and also August twenty-eighth. Anybody need the copy of them for us to vote on? Um, so anybody need the copy?
No, I do. I saw them. I reviewed them. I've got them here. I will abstain from the vote for July as I wasn't here, but otherwise.
Be a confident.
Yeah.
So if you wanna, um, I did send those in the email packet, but if you want to look at those and then you're ready.
Reading material, right?
Um. Just both of them together, I guess.
Thank you.
I want to make a complaint to approve it to like twenty-fourth and August twenty-eight. To prove it to like twenty-fourth and August twenty-eight.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, second.
I'll second.
So all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes and a noes. Um, the next meeting date would be, uh, staying with the fourth Monday, the month, October twenty-third. Next meeting aside from the one, the special meeting that we're going to be. Um, so the assessors did get back to me, uh, since this offered. And they would like to come to our October meeting. Um. They were questioning if it had to be up till twenty-third, or it could be something else. And I said, well, typically it's the fourth Monday, that's only of the building. Um, so she was gonna double check that works for them, but it probably would be all of the assessors coming.
Oh.
Um, so, really, our next meeting would be pretty much just them. We wouldn't have any other agenda items to be doing, cause.
That's fair.
Wouldn't have time, so. Um, but if that. Works, we can make, set our next meeting as October twenty-third, I'll let them know. Assuming they say it's okay for them. Um, if it's not okay for them, then hopefully by Thursday, when we have our next Zoom meeting. I'll have some feedback and maybe we can just pick a different date, but otherwise, um. And we do right now have the, um. I've got a poster up in the town hall for advertising the Aggie event. As soon as that's over with, I was gonna take that down and put up another poster about either. The, uh, business spotlight videos or the, um. Town directory and just kind of alter them. And I was gonna take your advice and just kind of put a little sticky up there and say. But then I'll also send out emails about announcing that and so forth. Um, so having said all that, does anybody want to make a motion to set our next appointment meeting for Monday, October twenty-third?
I would like to propose a motion to set our next meeting for Monday, October twenty-third.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, any other business that anyone wishes to bring up? No, right, do I have a, um, motion for agenda?
I'll make that, won't you?
So in a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Cable.